City Council Meeting, please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. Counselor Walsh, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
The following counselors have logged in and are present at tonight's meeting. President Kuschmerick, Counselor Boishman, Counselor Kucher, Counselor Gina Tally, Counselor Green, Counselor Schultz, Counselor Squalia, Counselor Van Hasenga, Counselor Walsh, and Counselor Zarella.
Next, we have a request for suspension of the rules from Counselors Zarella. Counselor Zarella, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move suspension of the rules on any and all rules of this body or of our parliamentary authority that may be inconsistent with either the remote participation format or with the state guidance on remote participation during the COVID-19 pandemic.
I have a motion and second. This will be conducted by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kuschmerick.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman. Counsel, can you please unmute, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasenga.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Public forum, the public has been advised to contact the city clerk's office by noon today regarding any comments or to register for public comment this evening. We have no comments brought forth by the general public or registrations. Next, we have report from the Appointments Committee. Counselor Squalia. I apologize. Report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Squalia.
We have reviewed the records and they appear to be in order.
I have a, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion and seconds to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Will it adopt by unanimous consent unless there is any objection? Seeing no objection, it is adopted. Next, we'll hear a report from the Appointments Committee, which met just moments ago. And took up the following matters. There was one reappointment for the Veteran Service Commissioner, term to expire October 1st, 2023 of Ms. Michelle Marino. We also had two new appointments presented by Chief Murama for permanent full-time firefighters for the city of Pittsburgh, Charles A. Colburn III and Ryan J. Major. Those were, all of which were unanimously approved.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report unless there is any objection. We will adopt the report by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is so moved. Next, we have communications from his honor, the mayor. We have one such communication of Mark A. Barbadoro as a building commissioner, return to expire October 1st, 2023. Though we sent to the Appointments Committee. And next, we have a special presentation from Pittsburgh State University. The university's operations and COVID-19 opening plan. And with that, I would like to welcome President Richard Lupitas and Dr. Laura Bayless, who are both joining us. And we'll ask them to unmute, see if we can get their video.
There you go. Can you hear me?
Wonderful. We can hear you.
Perfect.
Well, so President Lupitas, thank you for joining us. And Dr. Bayless, thank you both. I know this was a last-minute request, but I really wanted to make sure that both the public and the council had an opportunity to really hear about the due diligence and the hard work that has gone into reopening Pittsburgh State for the fall, as well as the precautions and efforts that you've undertaken to attempt to keep the community as safe and healthy as possible. And so with that, I'd like to just turn the floor over to you and allow you to to kind of walk us through your plan. I'll provide counselors an opportunity at the end of their presentation or remarks to ask any questions, but counselors, please keep in mind, I committed to having them out by 7:30. So we'll have a hard finish. Any questions that extend beyond 7:30, what I'd ask is you can forward those questions to me. I'll consolidate them and then forward them to President Lupitas. We can get some answers and then forward it back to the entire body. With that, good evening, President Lupitas.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. So just quickly, we started our process essentially when we moved the kids off campus in March. We moved them off. We opened the residence halls and we began planning for a fall reopening. And fortunately, we've been able to do that. We spent the duration of the summer following the state's guidance for reopening, stage by stage. It started with essentially bringing small groups of staff members back from telework. And then slowly, we started to add more people back and started to prepare for students as we transitioned from state's phase two to stage three. We spent the summer, as I would imagine many of you have, putting up signage and disinfecting stations and preparing reopening plans for employees as well as students. And if you have an interest in seeing those in detail, you can go to the coronavirus website on the name page of Pittsburgh State and read the specifics. We moved students back at the end of August. It started off in a rather untraditional way. Typically, we have move-in days where students come back with their families. We have a variety of celebrations. Everything is, of course, about de-densification. So students came back. They were given 15-minute increments to drop off things in the residence halls and then leave so that the next group could come in. And then slowly, we phased them back over time so that we kept the numbers small at any one point in time. You could only come with one parent, et cetera. So we've got them all moved in now. To give you a sense of occupancy in the residence halls, with full capacity, there are 1,700 beds on campus. And we have about 1,050 in the residence halls now. Typically, the rooms are singles, doubles, and some triples. The de-densification model resulted in virtually all rooms being singles, with the exception of few, a few based on floor plans that perhaps have more than one, but really reduce the number of individuals that share restrooms. We also have, if you're familiar with the campus, there's a set of Mara buildings in the heart of campus. There's eight of them. Three of them have been taken offline and they serve as either quarantine or isolation spaces for students that might get sick. The way the student plan is set up, ideally, if a student is not feeling well, symptomatic, our preference would be for them to go back home, see their primary care physician, isolate in their homes, but there are cases where that is not possible, where either the distance is too far, they put other individuals and their families at risk, et cetera. So we have the capabilities of housing them on campus. If that's the case, they would enter those residence halls. They are legally stocked with food that would get them through their period of time. Combinations are made for them with their faculty and they would take classes if they're well enough to do so in their rooms. We have only one student that's doing that right now. And I'll give you some numbers on that in a bit when we get to testing and tracing. But we've been very fortunate so far with regard to illnesses. With respect to our incoming day student population, we've got about 3,300 students this fall entering the campus, although not all of them are on campus. In round numbers, there are about 1,000 classes being offered during the day. And about 50% of those classes are fully online. That's not to say that a student couldn't have selected a residence hall option and taken all the classes online. But that gives you some sense of how many classes are on the ground. About 38% of the classes are in some form of remote hybrid format. And that could be all kinds of configurations from a class that would typically meet twice a week. So they maybe meet one day a week. Some of the classes are going every other week. Depending on the courses, there might even be some that go for a couple of weeks in duration before they come to campus. So it's a mix and match. It was really designed by the faculty member as how best they thought they could deliver the content and not degrade the quality of what they were offering. And then there's about 12% of the classes that are fully face-to-face. They tend to be our labs. A fair number of the nursing classes where there's really a need to practice some comm media classes, some studio art classes, things of that nature, where equipment and supplies would be needed. It would be very difficult to take off campus with students. So that's the makeup. I think the bottom line is that if you were walk on campus tomorrow, what you would see is a campus that probably at any point in time has maybe a quarter to a third of the students that it normally would have. Traffic is light. Students are going to and from their residence halls or to and from the parking lots and back home. Masks are required on the campus. Every kid. And I might add that we've been really, really pleased with our students. I would say 99.99% of them are wearing face covers all the time. They're very conscientious about protecting themselves, protecting others. They're serious about it in the classrooms. They sort of call each other out when they see one not wearing it properly or not wearing it all. We've got plenty of supplies if they need them. If a kid forgets their face covering or forgets some protective piece of equipment, we're more than able to supply that to them and they know that. I've done checks around the campus later at night on the weekends. And, you know, I'm actively trying to catch them and they're diligently wearing their face masks. I'll give them credit for that. We sent a lot of pretty strongly worded messages out. We don't want to be, you know, Boston College and have to send a whole bunch of them home. We don't have any party boats out in the backyard there. So things are going good so far. What else can I tell you? With regard to testing, students were tested coming in as a baseline. It was mandatory for all students to take tests that came from states that were designated as high-risk states. They tested, they were quarantined, and until they got their negative test score, they stayed in that quarantine. The baseline testing, and now we're into surveillance testing. We're trying to hit about 425 students a week for baseline testing. Currently, I think if you go to the, again, the coronavirus website, there's a dashboard up there that will give you information for weekly test results as well as cumulative numbers. I think it's showing about 1,700 completed tests thus far. All of them have been negative. So we've been in good shape there. We do have four students that reflect positive tests. None of them were identified through our testing service, but rather they were tests that came in from other communities. I think one was Pittsburgh, two at Leominster, and one in Gardner. And they came through information from public health agencies that picked up those positives. Three of those students had not touched campus. One did. Now I'll tell you a little bit about the tracing process. So we've, again, we've been fortunate with testing. We've got our next surveillance test coming up on Thursday. I think there's about 350-plus scheduled for that thus far, and we'll just keep running them through and doing our best to keep our eye on avoiding any clusters that pop up. With regard to the positives, the way the process works, we have partnered with the Pittsburgh Health Department. Steve Curry and his team have been really good. And it's a process that was actually set up by the state. We had a number of ways we could do it. Steve and his team wanted to take the lead on the tracing process, so they have. So what happens is that when the testing service, and we're using a company called the Broad Institute. The Broad Institute is a large processing laboratory. It's owned, it's a combination of Harvard and MIT. They're doing most of the higher ed testing in the state, processing, I think, millions of tests, incredible. Seven days a week, 24-hour, non-stop processing. We're using the most accurate test that's available. If you haven't seen it, it looks like a Q-tip. You rub it around the inside of your nostril. You slide it into a container that looks like a small little holding case, barcode on it. It goes to processing. The Broad Institute processes our test somewhere between, I think they've been averaging somewhere between 24 and 30-hour turnaround time. It comes back. If you are a negative, it comes back as just a notification that you're negative. You get a little app on your phone. It's a portal that comes in like you'd get maybe from your doctor or hospital when you do a lab. It comes in and it gives you that information. If it comes in as a positive, then that positive goes to the patient themselves. It will go to public health and it will go to the university, and that will start the tracing process. On campus, we have built our own tracing app so we know what classes every student is in, who they would have logically come in contact with, and some of the other things that they might be doing. So if you had a student, let's say, taking three classes and was part of the football team or part of, you know, women's basketball or whatever it might be, a keystroke will allow us to know where they've been and potentially who they come in contact with. We share that information with public health. Public health's responsibility is to do the tracing to identify who they were closest to. There's an epidemiologist that shares information with them as well to identify close contacts. And that's how we start to piece it together. And as I said, the Pittsburgh public health people have been really good so far at putting the pieces together. It's not always easy to do. I think that perhaps patients are not always as forthcoming as you'd like them to be. Sometimes it takes a couple of rounds of questioning till they actually divulge all the information you're seeking. You know, there's either a stigma attached to getting sick, or perhaps in the case of students, some fear that there would be negative consequences associated with getting sick. Of course, that's not the case. And we've been putting out educational messages to let them know that it's in everyone's best interest to share what information they have. And I think over time, that'll become more second nature. And I think that's kind of what I had. I don't know if you had anything else, Laura, that you wanted to add? Or we can field some questions, however you'd like to do it.
No, you did a great summary there. My only thing I would add is that we also offered the opportunity to test every employee. And the employees are part of our surveillance testing too, in addition to students. But that's all that I would add there, but I'm happy to answer any questions if the president would like me to chime in.
I would just ask, I know you said you certainly don't want to penalize students who test positive, but for those who may violate some of the, you know, the expectations and the code of conduct put forth to students, could you just walk us through what the ramifications or consequences might be? Just to give folks the, in public, you know, a sense of the severity and the expectations.
Sure. So that's right up Laura's alley. So she wrote that code, so I'll let her speak to it.
Absolutely. So we actually had a number of code items already in our code of conduct that apply to public health-related things. So we notified students in several different ways at the beginning that if needed, they would be subject to both formal and informal kinds of accountability related to their behavior in terms of jeopardizing the public health. And that could be as simple as, you know, a conversation with the dean of students or with me or some other, like someone in the residence halls or whatever, all the way up through and including suspension and dismissal. We can, if we're not certain about the risk someone poses to the campus, a student poses to the campus, then we can do an interim restriction or an interim trespass order as we investigate what the true risk, you know, really is. And then release them once it's determined if they really are not a risk, you know, that sort of thing. So there are a number of formal formal opportunities that we are prepared and some of which we've actually already used. We also have an educational component where students, if they are, you know, maybe it's not the most serious, but they are walking the line of following these guidance. We have an online module that they can take about the importance of living up to the public health expectations and why that's important for our community.
And if members of the public, particularly those who live in the immediate vicinity of the college, the overlay district, if you will, if they saw any concerning behavior, what would the best mechanism for them to bring those concerns to Pittsburgh State? How would they do that?
Yeah, if they go to the dean of students webpage, or really my webpage, there's a link there where anybody is able to submit documentation about an incident that they see of virtually any kind. But it specifically now has been added for the public health things.
Great. Questions from counselors? Throw it in the chat box if you'd like the floor. Seeing, don't see any? Wonderful. Well, I want to thank President Lupitas and Dr. Bayless for your time this evening, for the diligence that you've done and for coordinating with Mayor Gina Tally's administration. I was really quite impressed, President Lupitas, when I had the chance to speak with you directly last week. And then with Mayor Gina Tally recently as well, to hear about the collaboration and the hard work that both your staffs are doing to protect public health. So thank you to all those involved.
All right. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Have a good evening.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Counselors, before we go into our formal committee reports or back to the agenda, I just want to ask for a moment of silence. I think the public may have noticed that Counselor Fleming is not with us this evening. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the recent passing of her mother, Palma Sandrelli, at the age of 84. So I'd ask that we take a moment. Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers are certainly with the Fleming and Sandrelli families as they mourn. Next, we have returning to our agenda. Orders Finance. We have 200 through 203, and I understand that there are requests for suspension of the rules on all of these items. I think we can bring in Mr. Skorowski. Wonderful. I see he's joining us now.
I'll move suspension of the rules on 200 through 203.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 220 through 20320. That will require a roll call vote for suspension. Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, did we lose you? All right. So I will, I'll conduct the roll call vote. Bear with me, Counsel. This is recorded, so we may rely on the video. Counselor Van Hasenga.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yay.
And Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
It is unanimous. 200 through 20320 are now before the body. We have Mr. Skorowski joining us to speak to these matters. There's any questions? Before I have you do that, Madam Clerk, I conducted the roll call vote. It was unanimous. And that's all that you missed. Mr. Skorowski, if you'd like to speak to any of these matters before the council entertains them, the floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you, counseling, and good evening, counselors. I'm here tonight to discuss four items of reprogramming from CBPG funding. The first looks to reprogram 160,000 from our year 46 demolition funds to business supports. Another seeks to reprogram $76,160 from our year 45 demo to business supports. Another seeks to reprogram $50,000 from year 45 demo to parks and playgrounds. And then finally, $2,000 from year 45 demo to Crocker, the Crocker Field restoration work. So in total, we're looking at $288,000. We're seeking to reprogram from existing CBPG funds from demolition to business supports, parks and playgrounds, and Crocker Field respectively. And just briefly getting into the why, why we're doing this, we just got a, our bids came back from our demo round. And they came back a bit lower than anticipated. And we also saw a few projects fall off the list. So we had a much larger balance in our demo for CBPG than anticipated. And planning ahead for demo, we really, you know, we're in the midst of an economic crisis right now. We feel like now is a really important time to build up, not knock down, community. And, you know, ultimately, not to discount the needs and importance of a good demolition program, but just sort of in the hierarchy of needs, there are some really important community building programs that we need to invest in with our CBPG program. So just to name a few, with parks and playgrounds, we will be receiving words soon on a grant that we submitted, a park grant to the state for the Sam Pollock Community Playground at Park Hill Park. We're feeling pretty optimistic about the results there, but we'll be needing to set funding aside as our local match for that project. And it's anticipated we'll be, you know, setting that 50,000 aside now, which is part of this reprogramming effort, and then 86,000 in our next CBPG year that starts July 1 of 2021. So we just wanted to be sort of fiscally responsible and take some of that balance dedicated towards that effort. And then the bulk of the funding is really that 236,000 in total is going towards business supports. And, you know, that will supplement 50,000 that you already reprogrammed a few months back, in addition to the 100,000 that was approved for the current CBPG program year. And the reason we're doing that hopefully should be apparent to everyone. But, you know, we've got some really pressing economic needs and some pressing needs in our small business community. We've already put, you know, over, you know, between Reimagine North Main, the city, and the redevelopment authority, we've invested over $450,000 Reimagine North Main, the city and the redevelopment authority, we've invested over four hundred fifty thousand dollars in grants to our small business community through this crisis. We also need to continue to invest in our small business community, providing loans. And so some of this funding will go towards our zero percent interest loan program, which, you know, now more than ever, we need to be supporting the small business community and planning ahead. But also, you know, accounting for unforeseen expenditures as a result of this crisis. And then finally, we do want to retain some flexibility in our small business supports because although we have put a lot of money out the doors and supported a lot of small businesses throughout the city, this is starting to feel a lot more like a marathon than a sprint. And we want to make sure we have the financial flexibility to support the small business community in the future. Particularly as we're entering the, the colder months and, and some uncertainty as we approach fall and winter. So we want to make sure we have a, a strong nest egg to help support efforts for our small business community. And then lastly, there's that small two thousand dollar item for Crocker Field. That was really more or less, since we had the hood open and we were doing some reprogramming, it's just a minor adjustment to that line item to help support staff time for the Crocker Field project, which previously had been led by DPW. And now our senior projects manager, Amy LeBlanc, has been taking on a lot of those coordinating efforts, working with the Crocker Field Restoration Committee. So that's it in a nutshell. I'm happy to entertain questions if you have them.
First, Counselor Squalia has the floor.
Thank you. The business loan pool, will this be a different kind of criteria than we've already established for the grants that we've been giving out? This will now be for the business loan? Will this? Well, I guess that's my first question.
Yep. So a couple of things there. So one of them, you know, we had two different rounds of, of business grant funding. The second round was with CARES Act funding. The first round, what we actually did was we, we had taken funding from our existing small business loan pool. And we depleted it entirely to go towards grants to the small business community. So this will help rebuild our, our pre-existing loan fund. And, you know, with that fund, we offer competitive interest rates for all of our loans at a five-year term. But with restaurants and downtown businesses in particular, we offer loans and we offer loan forgiveness after fifty-five qualifying payments. Basically, if, if you, you pay regularly, the last six payments are forgiven. So that's a pre-existing loan program that has now been recapitalized through this reprogramming effort, both in the past few months, but also hopefully tonight. At the same time, by moving it into this line, we, we basically accounted for the fact that we've got actually two hundred fifteen thousand dollars of loan applications in our pipeline currently. So we do have a great deal of interest in need for our loan fund. But what we're asking for today will actually go above and beyond that two hundred fifteen thousand that we have in the pipeline. And we wanted to build a fair amount of flexibility in the event that we needed to fund additional grants. Then it's basically just a, a simple administrative effort on our part. It's in the right fund, so to speak, for us to do that.
So you intend for the bulk of this to go to business loans at a reasonable interest rate? And some of it may be able to be used for grant funding like in the first couple of rounds.
Yes. So we altogether, if, if tonight's reprogramming goes through, we'll have about three hundred eighty-six thousand in our small business supports lines. Of that, we have two hundred fifteen thousand that has been, you know, in the pipeline. We have basically loan applications that have come into our office. So we've got about a hundred seventy remaining. It's very likely we'll see more loan applicants, but I think, you know, we want to keep that door open for a good chunk of that, perhaps to be around three of our, of our supports in the future, should we need it. Hopefully, we don't. But, but late fall, early winter, you know, when, when we were faced with the situation in March where we really had to get the ball moving and, you know, reprogram funds and, you know, get that money out the door, that all takes time and we, we just want to, we want to plan in advance. So the way we see a best case scenario, we have that funding available for businesses. Should that need arise and, you know, worst case scenario, we've got some additional funds to help us rebuild. So that's, that's what we're doing here.
Thank you. And can you just explain for the businesses? What kind of business might this, a loan be best suited for, right, throughout the city? What kind of businesses should be applying for this? And can you also tell me what the range of the loan might be from five hundred dollars to fifty thousand dollars?
Right. So there's really two key criteria that we can use with our CDBG program to administer loans. And, and they're really best suited for small businesses, but we can either fund microenterprises, which are businesses of five employees or less. And then there are no job requirements associated with it. They're only income based. Basically, were a business to hire an income eligible employee, which almost in all cases, if you're five employees or less, you, you qualify. If you're larger than five employees, then it's actually based on jobs. So per X amount of dollars, I think right now, then the number's thirty-five thousand dollars per job created or retained. That number might change, but if you want to kind of think of it that way, you know, we can either fund a very small business or a business that's creating jobs to scale. The, the largest loan that we've given out has been a hundred ten thousand. And, you know, the smallest have been anywhere from, you know, five, six thousand. So you know, there's definitely a wide range of, of what we would support, but generally, small businesses, we do a lot of support with restaurants and the food industry in particular. Strong Style Coffee, River Sticks, Pig and Flames, beyond our, a couple of the existing loans in our portfolio. Just to give you a sense of what we've funded in the past.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Counsel Green.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Mr. Skorowski.
Likewise.
How many? How many businesses so far has this money been used to either bridge a funding gap or support them through these COVID times?
Well, for the loan fund, we have, we have four businesses in our portfolio right now and have four that have applied for and, and, you know, basically are awaiting the reprogram to receive funding. And some of them are COVID related in their needs and some of them are looking to expand or grow. We'll actually have an exciting announcement about that in October, something really exciting happening near City Hall. But in, in terms of the businesses we've supported through all our small business grant programs related to COVID, it's been over sixty businesses at this point between Reimagine North Main, the Redevelopment Authority in the city, and with the city itself unduplicated, we're, we're, I believe, just over forty businesses that we supported.
Thank you. I commend your effort on that. My other question is, because we've sat together for a long period of time in the NICE committee, how quickly will we be able to get two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars back into our demo budget?
You know, hopefully soon enough, you know, it, the, I guess the other item is it's, that, that I didn't mention in my comments, it's become more difficult to get sort of low hanging fruit demo projects like it, like it once was. And actually, I think that in some respects, we're a victim of our own success. But the, the easiest projects we have to demo are really those that are publicly owned. Some, some good examples of that would be, you know, the, the former buildings on Water Street that Galaxy Developments came in and, and replaced, right, would be, you know, you, you had these large publicly held properties that it's really easy to demo public buildings. Ones that are privately held, they need to be deemed a pressing public health and safety concern. And without that clear and present danger, if you will, it's hard to, it, it, what we would be doing in effect in demolishing private property is an eminent domain taking, if we don't have the private property owner's consent. So it becomes more challenging when we don't have a large portfolio of public projects to, to demolish. So it, it's to some degree, counselor contingent on what we're, we'll be looking at in the next year through kind of the tax title process and what type of publicly owned properties that are a vacant and, and blighting issue in a neighborhood we might come into contact with. But I would like to think next year's CDBG round, we'll be able to recapitalize this fund a bit. And then hopefully we'll be in a free cash situation where we'll likewise be able to seek additional funds from the council.
My last point will be, I, I do think that that we need to take a better look at property that we end end up receiving in lieu of taxes. Because there's been a couple of times where those properties have ended up costing the city more than what we would ever be able to get from them. We should have, looking back, it's always easier at hindsight and this is criticism, but just as we plan, looking further into these properties that maybe we should just, maybe we should just let the owner take care of it on their own and not always have to come to the rescue of these people who are looking to bail on properties that end up costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars to clean up, fix up, and then we're stuck holding the bag on them.
Oh, a- absolutely. And we are seeking funding from the EPA in just a month to get Brownfield's assessment money. So, you know, previously, the redevelopment authority had something like that, but as we're looking to acquire properties through the tax title taking process, this will allow us funding to do our due diligence in the assessment, you know, doing phase ones and phase twos on properties. Because essentially, any property that's had any type of industrial history, it's going to be dirt. Wouldn't, couldn't agree more that, you know, we've got to work on making sure that if we're taking a property, it's something worth taking.
Great. Thank you. And I would just like to say, as always, I commend the effort that our community development department does. Keep up the good work. I know it's challenging, but, you know, we are all here to support you. So thank you and nice to see you.
Thank you. Likewise. That means a lot. Appreciate it.
Counselor Boishman.
Tom, good afternoon. Question for you is this, this, these loans, they're just for Pittsburgh businesses, right?
Absolutely.
Nobody else, right? And what, and do you say what the interest rate's going to be?
So for, for restaurants, food service businesses and Main Street businesses, the interest rate is zero percent, which I'm told is pretty low. And otherwise, we, we try to align it with with the, the market and, and market rates. The reason we're, we're doing that for those two businesses in particular is Main Street and Restaurants. We, we know that we, those are areas for growth. So we're trying to use interest as, as a tool to incentivize development in those areas.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matters before the council.
Motion to approve two hundred twenty through two oh three twenty.
I have a motion and second to approve two hundred through two oh three twenty. Speaking on the motion, seeing none, we'll take this by unanimous consent. There are no objections. We'll adopt two hundred through two oh three twenty. Seeing none, it is adopted. Next on the, thank you, Mr. Skorowski. I know you're sticking around for the one, one further item. Next, we have petitions to a four twenty that stands referred to both the water wastewater commission and the Legislative Affairs Committee. And then lastly, we have one ninety-one twenty. Counselor Andrew Van Hozenga to approve Mayor Dina Tally's tax increment exemption tie agreement for eighteen Blossom Street pursuant to the city of Pittsburgh's housing development incentive H-DIP market rate housing districts. And with that, Counsel, because of my relationship to the owner and developer for this project, I'm going to recuse myself and ask Counselor Walsh to, to take over for this item. With that, I'm going to stop my video and mute my mic. Counselor Walsh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you see, the one ninety-one twenty is before us. Mr. Skorowski is here to speak to this. Is that my understanding, Mr. Skorowski? I, I believe at this point in time, we need a, a suspension of the rules on this.
Move suspension of the rules on one ninety-one twenty.
Taken.
I have a motion and second on suspension of the rules, and I believe that this is a roll call vote. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And would you please take the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Vice President Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz. Counselor Schultz.
You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
That is unanimous. I'm sorry, Counselor Van Hozenga.
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous.
Okay, the vote is unanimous. One ninety-one twenty is before us. I believe that Mr. Pelletier is available for questions if the counselors have questions. And I believe, Mr. Skorowski, did you want to address this?
Sure. I, I'd be happy to talk high level. And then, Mr. Pelletier will be here with particular questions about the property and the project. You, the council had reviewed our plans to expand our H-DIP zone back in March. And H-DIP is a special incentive offered by the state that really offers two key tools. One of them is a state level tax credit and another is a locally negotiated tax increment exemption agreement, what many folks refer to often as a TIF for market rate housing projects in gateway cities. So it's a unique tool in that it's only available to gateway cities that have taken advantage of creating an H-DIP district. Our H-DIP district is, for all intents and purposes, our downtown and our River Street corridor. The project in question today is right at eighteen Blossom Street, right near the entryway of our downtown. Many of you may know it as a site that had been proposed in, right around the Great Recession for ten townhouse style developments. And, you know, is at the site of a former, I, what I believe was a hotel, a large, large complex that was felled by a fire. And so originally, there were ten two-bedroom condo units proposed there. Nick Pelletier, the developer, is taking on the same development program, but has removed three of the, the units from consideration. So we're actually looking at seven two-bedroom, two-bath units, fifteen hundred dollars a month for rent on that point five acres of land. That's basically right off the corner of Crescent and Blossom. It's, it's a, a large vacant lot. You're probably familiar with it. The, the cost of the project is about one point six million dollars. The current base level value of that plot of land is a hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. So what we have in front of us today through the H-DIP program, in order to be eligible for the state level tax credit, which for this project is valued at about three hundred fifty thousand dollars, to be eligible for that, the developer needs to bring a locally negotiated tax increment exemption agreement to the state as a component of their application. So in developing one, the mayor had convened an H-DIP committee comprised of our treasurer, our auditor, our member of the Board of Assessors and Counselor Van Hozenga, who represented as the chair of the Economic Development Committee. And we created a, a set of criteria to help determine what type of tax increment exemption agreement we would come to. The, the parameters developed by the state is that an agreement can be anywhere from five to twenty years for ten to a hundred percent of the increment value created on a project. Ultimately, we determined for, for the project in front of us, we proposed a, a five-year tax increment exemption agreement that phases down from a hundred percent the first year to ninety-five percent, then ninety, then eighty-five, then eighty percent. And in year six, they would pay a hundred percent of their tax burden. You know, ultimately, this is a, a, one of hopefully many H-DIP projects we'll be seeing in the future. And I think a really great example of what we want to see. This is a vacant lot that's going to be transformed into seven market rate housing townhouse style developments right next to downtown. You know, currently, this project takes in about, or currently the site takes in about twenty-seven hundred dollars in taxes a year. Um, you know, currently this project takes in, um, about, or currently the site takes in about twenty seven hundred dollars in taxes a year. After this project is all finished, we'll be looking at about thirty three thousand dollars in taxes, so. Um, you know, an increase in the municipal tax base of almost thirty thousand dollars a year, in addition to removing a blighted vacant property. Right near downtown, so, um, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions as, as you have them.
Okay, I think, uh, first, uh, uh, Counselor Green has a question, and I don't know if your question is for Mr. Skorowski or Mr. Pelletier, but, uh, you have the floor.
Um, thank you, and I'm not sure who's, um, gonna. Um, take this on, but. Seven units at two bedrooms, two bath, fifteen hundred dollars. A month, that, that doesn't really seem like, uh, market rate. Potential, considering that. Uh, we have privately owned two and three family homes that are getting between eighteen hundred and twenty one hundred dollars a month. For those rents, so I'm just wondering where the fifteen hundred dollar a month. Came up as market rate housing for two bedroom, two bath.
Yep, I'll, I'll defer to, to Mr. Pelletier on this one.
Sure, so I own, I own, um, probably fifteen units in Pittsburgh, those prices that you quoted are just things I'm, I haven't found, so. I'm not sure if that's closer to the college possibly, but I do know the proximity to Main Street does limit what people are gonna be willing to spend. Uh, my two bedroom units typically go for more like twelve hundred dollars, so we're looking at new construction with a garage. We're actually hoping we're gonna be able to get sixteen, but we're trying to budget conservatively. Um, I just haven't seen twenty one hundred for rent in Pittsburgh, uh, for a two bedroom, I just haven't seen that.
I think the one place you might approach it is the yarn loft development. But, but aside from that, it does sort of, th- this seems on the higher end of, of it. At least multifamily style developments, this isn't, it's sort of somewhere in between as a townhouse, of course, right? It's not a single family home, it's not a large multifamily development in the case of the yarn loft that has, you know, laundry facilities, gyms, common areas. A huge outdoor spaces, so, um, you know, I think there's a little bit of value that's lost there, but. And certainly different than a single family home where you have your own backyard and you're, you know, completely. You know, isolated, a- as it were, it's, it's, it's a different experience, a different housing typology, I guess I would say.
Right, and I guess, um, because we've heard in years past that. People want to live in a downtown, that that's where, uh, you know, that's gonna be the driving factor for supporting our downtown businesses. Are these families that are going to move in, which leads me to my other question. Two bedroom, two bath, how many, uh, young people do we plan on putting through the school system? And again, I know that it's only seven units, but, um, you know, every student costs the city fifty thousand dollars to educate. So I'm just wondering how, how you're going to make up. You know, or help us with the revenue of paying for that, if we're, if we're giving you this tax break.
Sure, understood, I, I think my, my expectation and, and obviously in, in housing, we're not able to discriminate by any means, but I. I think if you look at the most likely, um, the most likely target audience, I, I, I don't think. Um, these units are necessarily designed, um, to, to have a large burden on the school systems. I expect that these are gonna be a mix of graduates, grad students, professors. Um, possibly, you know, students that are in their later years at, at Pittsburgh State. Um, I, that would be my gut, but at the same time, you know, in no ways would we be discriminating it by any means. Um, I just think for two bedrooms typically, you know, my experience with my rentals is typically you're seeing the larger families in the three bedroom units. Um, and we did, the original design that was approved was three bedroom units, um, but we looked at two bedrooms as being more financially feasible as a project.
They, and to give this, uh, none of these comments were meant to be criticisms by.
No, it's fine, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Uh, applaud you for, um, you know, continuing to do business with the City of Pittsburgh, I hope that it's been. A, a fairly easy, uh, transition to go from, uh, start to hopefully to finish, so. Again, I applaud your efforts, thank you for working so closely with our Community Development Department and our Mayor's Office, I appreciate everybody. Appreciate everybody that was involved, and I do look forward, because I have seen the, the plans on this, and they do look. Unlike anything that we've ever seen before, so I, I welcome that change, so good luck to you, and I, I am supporting the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green, uh, next to speak is, uh, Counselor Dean Natale, you have the floor.
Thank you, uh, just to clerk, correct one of the comments made earlier, it's about twelve thousand five hundred to educate a student in Pittsburgh. Uh, Mr. Pelletier, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly for this, I know there are some people that don't like TIFs because they go into some tirade on. Why don't we give TIFs to everybody, and what about the people that are paying more in taxes? That viewpoint misses the big picture, and it, it doesn't take anything into consideration about why we're trying to incentivize this. Whether for you or for Mr. Skorowski, how long has that lot been vacant?
So the project initially started in two thousand five, um, and it was right around two thousand five, two thousand six, when the foundations were going in, and then. Uh, it was abandoned, so we're looking at, you know, we're looking at about fourteen, fifteen years.
So fifteen years since it started, and, and, and it probably goes well beyond that before that even.
True, yeah, correct, yeah, yeah, correct, yeah.
That was really, so we're talking at least twenty years, that lot has been nonproductive. And, uh, the reason why I'm supporting this is because I look at the fact that we're collecting. Little over two thousand dollars right now. And this will go up to well over thirty thousand when it's done, so that's an increase of thirty thousand dollars in taxes. But beyond that, you're bringing people to the downtown. That's what, one of the things that I've been told as a counselor for years, we need more of, so. The fact that it's bringing in that much more revenue, and the fact that it's market rate housing. Uh, is, is both good, good things to see, and what will happen, we hope is it's infectious, it'll. It'll, 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 it'll inspire or incentivize others to start developing down there. Tom, there, there is a, there is a ton of stuff going on downtown, if it weren't for this pandemic. That might delay things, but, you know, I list them all the time, I, I, there's probably twenty to twenty five things going on down there, or will be going on down there. And I didn't even think of this one. This is, this is just an additional. Project that's going into the downtown, that I will hopefully see. The dividends from, I don't see any downside to it, so. Uh, the fact that it's been vacant for over twenty years, the fact that it's not collecting any taxes really. And now you're gonna bring seven units down there market rate, you're gonna clean up that area, make it look nice. And you're, you're going to, you, you, the project was one point six million?
Approximately, in, in that ballpark, yeah.
Right, so, so we have a private investor who's going to put in one point six million into the downtown. I mean. The, 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 the law, I don't even like looking at it as a loss in revenue, you, you gotta do a holistic approach to this. What these people are going to be bringing in for disposable income, them living in the downtown, the other things that'll follow as a result of that. You gotta take it all in, you can't just look at what it could have been if we didn't give the TIF. I look at it as, we don't give the TIF, we lose one point six million dollars in investments in the downtown. That's how I look at it, uh, so, um, I, I congratulate you on this project, I hope it goes very well. And, um, it's just adding to the excitement that's going on downtown, or was going on downtown until the plague hit. So, um. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Pelletier, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor Dean Natale, um, I believe next is, uh, Counselor Zarella, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, uh. I don't have all that much to say that hasn't already been said, so I won't belabor it, I just wanna say, uh, this is. The kind of project we need more of, uh, this kind of investment, this kind of rehabilitation of blighted property. This is something that I want to see all across the city, so I will be in support of this. And I appreciate your investment in our city.
Thank you, Counselor Zarella. Counselor Squally, I believe you are next, and you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Pelletier, for your investment, um, I'm excited to see that. Lot with the foundations that have been sitting there for fifteen years, now it'll be the Crescent Townhouses.
Yeah, exactly.
So, are you able to use the existing, reuse any of the existing foundation, and why are you cutting it from ten to seven?
Sure, uh, so to, on your first point, yes, we are, we've had a structural engineer analyze the existing foundations, and we've designed the property off of. What, uh, designed the, the townhouses off of the existing floor plans. The question, the second question is, is a twofold answer, so the first part of it is. The, when we first started this project, our, uh, Hannigan Engineering looked at the previous site plan, and they said, I don't know that there ever should have been ten. That's that far left, the front far left townhouse, he said, the grade that was gonna be there really was gonna be rough, and. And at the time, you know, not accusing anyone of anything, but he just said, i- if, he didn't think the tenth one was viable. Um, my other problem too, when I look at a project is, I, I don't really wanna max out a lot and, and really have a significant parking issue. Um, and so when I looked at the design and what I thought was. You, you gotta, you gotta look at the fact that that lot on all sides has no parking, right? Crescent Street is, is small as it is, and you really don't want to be parking on Blossom Street, so. I wanted to make sure that the project had long-term viability, and the best way to have that was to make sure that we had some green space and some parking potential. I also don't know what's coming down the road with, with units potentially on Main Street, and I know there's a big push to get some units on Main Street, but I think some. You know, the project was financially more feasible at seven, it left some available space for additional parking for these units, and then also keep some options open for the future.
Thank you, and with regards to parking, did you note that there are gonna be garages, are there like garages underneath, like on those townhouses? On John Fitch Highway across from Coolidge, is that kinda what it looks like?
Yeah, so if we're gonna, we're going for a slightly more industrial feel, just based on, uh. So they're actually looking at spiral staircases to make it feel a little bit more like that industrial look that matches a lot of what's already in the downtown, and I think. Um, rather than just putting up modern townhouses there, that would look a little out of place, uh, but yes, garages as you spoke of, yep.
Nice, okay, and what is your anticipated timeline for getting state approval for? The, the, the total of the grants for the H dip program, and what is your total anticipated timeline? Of construction after you get the, after you figure you'll get the state grants.
Absolutely, so H dip's a little funny in that you really start really moving without full approval, because, because they don't actually give full approval until the project's done anyways. Um, so, you know, this tie was a key piece of that puzzle, uh, we do have financing commitment from Main Street Bank. And we have actually given the go ahead to start with the site work on the site. Really, a- and I think, um, you know, Tom did mention this, without that H dip credit, the project is not really, it. It financially feasible, it's, it's really tough nowadays, especially with the increased price in lumber, um, to make these projects make sense. Um, so the H dip is gonna, you know, really, this is part of it to feed into the H dip. From a construction standpoint, our contractor is currently looking at a spring completion timeline. Um, with hopes of starting the remaining site work, you might have seen that the lot was totally cleared. Um, all the existing brush was removed again, which was much needed, and so hopefully we're getting underway with, uh, finishing any additional site work, and then. You know, moving towards framing the, you, you get, the winter's gonna play with us a little bit, but we're gonna figure that out.
Yep, well, that's why we have the H dip program, uh, there in the downtown to encourage this kind of development and make it more feasible. And I think the, the, the five year, um, tax increment, um, financing that we have here, uh, or exemption. Uh, is reasonable as well, uh, just one more question, where's the entry to this? Is it gonna be on Blossom and Crescent, how do you enter this?
Only on cres- only on Crescent.
Only on Crescent.
Yep.
Alright, great, thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Counselor Boeschmann, I believe you are next on the list, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, good evening, how are ya? Hey, uh, the reason why, your units are gonna cost around twenty and thirty thousand a unit?
Yep.
So you don't have any intentions of selling them, you're just gonna rent them all as out?
So right now, I don't think, i- in the, for the foreseeable future, there is no intention to sell them. You know, what, what could happen down the road twenty years plus, I, I, I do not know, but right now, there is no intention to sell them. I, I don't think it would be financially feasible to sell them at this time, it's designed as a rental property, um, that is, that's the intention.
And you're gonna have the entrance on Crescent Street, right?
Yeah, that's where the design was initially, and we're, we're sticking with that entrance point.
Okay, alright, that's it, thank you very much, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Counselor Van Hazinga, you are next on the list, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, so as the council's representative to the H dip committee, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process. And, um, the city's been very deliberative and, um, considerate in evaluating prospective developments for this exemption. Um, we're targeting properties that are positioned at the top of the market, which this one is. Um, we're targeting, uh, properties that really currently have a detrimental effect on the, the neighborhood, the surrounding area in the city. And this has been a blighted property for quite some time, we're targeting properties of, of course, are in the, the district in downtown, but also close to. The Intermodal Station and the commuter rail. Um, so this one, and we're also really emphasizing projects that will not put a, a large strain on the school system. We're avoiding projects that have very high percentage of three bedroom and larger units. Um, this one is, uh, a little unique in that it's all twos, which is a little bigger than, than we, we typically like for this kind of project. But it's also a very limited time commitment, this is just limited to five years. So this is a, an exemption that we can give to push this project, uh, over the edge to make sure it will happen. I think it'll be a great benefit to the city, and I'm looking forward to it, especially as it's located my ward and right down the street from. All the time, the past fifteen years, I've, I've been staring at those, uh, those foundations. Consuming, so I'd be very excited when work really gets underway, and I see framing going up, so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor, um, I agree, I, I think that this project is, is for all of the reasons that, that. That, uh, Counselor Van Hazinga just stated, and, and, uh, Counselor Dean Natale as well, um, I, I think it just makes sense. Uh, this is a, a no brainer, and I will be voting in favor of that, of the project. Um, seeing no one else who wishes to speak. One ninety one dash twenty is before you, Council. I have a motion and second to approve, um, and I believe, uh, Madam Clerk, does this re- require a roll call vote?
Um, I would on this, yes, Counselor.
Okay, and would you please take the roll?
Yes. Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschmann.
Yay.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Pelletier.
No problem.
We appreciate it.
No problem, thank you, everyone.
And good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I believe that, uh, Mr. Kushmerek can, is rejoining us, I will turn the meeting back over to President Kushmerek, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Walsh, I think you left me the easy part, uh, which is, that concludes this evening's agenda. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And second to adjourn, which will do by unanimous consent, are there any objections? Seeing no objections, we are adjourned, counselors, uh, and the public, we will see you for the, uh, the budget, final budget meeting next, uh. Next Tuesday, uh, September twenty second, have a good night, everyone.